Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator-Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong, solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator-Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
It's been a long time since I've held a gavel. Got a little excited there. Good morning. I'd like to call this Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First things first, would the Commissioners please stand up and rise for the oath of office? My name is Lisa Postumas Lyons. I am the Kent County Clerk, and it is my privilege and duty to administer the oath and make you all official Commissioners. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of County Commissioner in and for the county of Kent and the state of Michigan according to the best of your abilities?
I do.
Excellent. Thank you. In the words of Bon Jovi, "You're halfway there." Please, you've each got an oath of office at your seat. If you would each sign that and pass them down to me, that will make you official. I'll begin by calling the roll call of Commissioners. Commissioners Antor.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Bulkowski.
Present.
Hennessy.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Salfeld.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Steck.
Here.
Talan.
Here.
Vonk.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Wooden.
Here.
There is a quorum. There are 19 members present and zero absent. At this time, I would like to call on Commissioner Womack to give the invocation.
Yes, I am Kent County Commissioner Robert S. Womack. I'd like to say hello and Happy New Years to all my great colleagues on the board and to the public. And I will start my invocation with words of wisdom and a little prayer by Fred Wooden, Reverend Wooden, who has done so much in our community. And as we talk about diversity being one of our goals for Kent County and our various cities and townships, he is somebody who's been a leader of that in our community for many years.
I am here in multiple capacities today. First, as a citizen. Second, as a clergyman. And third, as the father of your newest Commissioner. But I'm here mostly to give you the benefit of the common wisdom. Most of the time, you put your hand on a Bible and swear to do all the right things. We do that. But Steve and I, we put our hand on the Boy Scout manual, because the values of Boy Scouting are really what set us into this world. We really do believe in doing our best to do our duty to God and our country. We really do believe in being trustworthy, loyal, honest, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent. And I think you should too. That my invocation to you is to do your best, to do your duty to God and your country, to obey the Scout Law, because it applies to us all, to help other people at all times, to keep yourself physically strong, mentally straight, and morally straight. Ancient One, give these people such courage as they can live up to the ideals that boys of America and girls of America have looked up to for their entire lives. Make them worthy of the children who believe in them, because they, they are putting our trust, their trust, in you. So act as if you are the parent of every child in this county, and that every one of them lives in your house and needs your care to eat and sleep and learn and grow. For if you live up to their ideals, you cannot fail. And if you don't live up to their ideals, you cannot succeed. And so let us all together make that solemn promise and gratitude, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with our first item of business, the election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for Chair.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Voorhees.
I would like to nominate Ms. Mandy Bolter. It's a real honor for me, because Mandy and her family and the Voorhees's go back a lot of years. When Mandy worked for Joanne in Lansing, and over the years, and a young lady that I've just admired through the time. And now to have this honor to nominate her, I would ask for a second to my nomination.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Voorhees to nominate Commissioner Mandy Bolter for the position of Chair. Is there a second?
Support.
It's been supported by Commissioner Breevy. Are there any other nominations, or is there a motion to close nominations?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that nominations be closed and a unanimous ballot be cast for Mandy Bolter as Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners.
Support.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Voorhees and supported by Commissioner Womack. All those in favor of Mandy Bolter to serve as the Chair of the Board of Kent County Commissioners, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner, or should I say, Madam Chair.
We coordinated today.
Sometimes dangerous to give an elected official the microphone, so I'll be pretty brief. I just obviously want to say thank you to my fellow Board members. It's a real honor to be elected by you. And for the people of the 5th District, I am just so honored to have their support. I also want to thank my husband, Alan, who's with me, he stepped away. My two best parade candy testers, Hayden and Hudson. And my parents and brother are both here today as well. My poor families probably heard more about some random address at 82 Ionia than they ever cared to hear about. So I really appreciate all their support. I look around this board, and you know, I want to look past the Rs and Ds and just look at the vast amount of experience we bring. We bring a lot to the table. We have different interests. We have different point of views. We have different backgrounds. But I hope that we view that as a positive and not a negative moving forward. So I hope we can park the politics at the door and bring some productive public service to this board. Just recapping, we did have some great highlights last year. Briefly, increases for lead and PFAS funding, the LRE, our AAA bond, again, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention, the Tiger Bill got passed, thanks to Commissioner Ponstein, Voorhees, Hennessy, and Clerk Lyons for bringing that to our attention kind of at the last minute. And I'm excited to not have to hear about Tiger reproduction again in miscellaneous. Looking forward, we're going to, you know, engage our immigration focus group, our space needs and use plan, our strategic plan, and we'll be balancing the budget. We're also going to be doing some budget boot camps for new members if they have an interest. And I just look forward to a productive year. So let's get to work. Thank you. Madam Clerk. Oh, I have to call for her. Madam Clerk, I call you to elect our Vice Chair. We will open the nominations for an individual to serve as Vice Chair.
Madam Clerk, it's my honor to nominate Stan Steck as Vice Chair of the Kent County Commission.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Vonk and supported by Commissioner Coleman to nominate Commissioner Stan Steck to serve as Vice Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by the same sign. The motion passes. Madam Chair, I'm pleased to announce that Commissioner Steck will serve as the Vice Chair of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Steck, would you like to have any comments?
You do know a lawyer, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for the expression of confidence. I too share the Chair's perspectives that while we come to these tables here with differences, we have different places we come from, we have different districts we represent, we may have different parties and different perspectives on issues, and clearly, over the course of the year, we will probably vote in different ways as issues come before us. But I accept that we all come to this table with a common, shared commitment of service, and service for our communities, service for our constituents, and service for what's in the best interests of this county. And I believe that we all share a deep-seated commitment to achieve the health, the welfare, and the justice for this community. So I look forward to tackling all of those issues and working with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. All right, we're going to move on to Item 9 on the agenda, which is public comment.
Vice Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jim. Item 8, election of our Minority Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination?
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Jim Talan for the Minority Vice Chair.
Support.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Do we have any, all in favor? Any other nominations? No.
Want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that nominations be closed and a unanimous ballot be cast for Jim Talan.
Support.
To be the Vice Chair, Minority Chair of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations. Do you have any comments?
Just real quickly, I appreciate the confidence, but I also want to acknowledge our colleague, Carol Hennessy, who served the first 10 years in what was a new position in this body, started back in 2009. So some big shoes to fill, but I appreciate that long service and the great example that Carol set for us all. Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Commissioner Talan. All right, we now are moving to Item 9, which is public comment. As has been our practice for the past three years, individual public comment is limited to three minutes. Person wishing to address the Board is requested to state his or her name and address. Person may address the Board on matters or issues which are relevant to county government. Chair may allow or disallow public comment that is unduly repetitious, not relevant to county government, or matters not under consideration of the Board. Does anyone have any public comment today? Please line up in the center aisle. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. I'm Amy Carpenter. I'm a resident of Kent County, which is actually occupied on a Shenabe land. I'm one of the core team of GR Rapid Response to ICE, and I'm an ally member of Movimiento Cosecha GR. And I'm here to say that though it's a new year, and there are new Commissioners, we are still asking for the same thing. We are still listening to members of the immigrant community that are here in Kent County, that contribute $3.3 billion to this local economy, work that couldn't be done without them, who are saying that the contract that Kent County has with ICE is harming them. It is hurting their families. It is making them feel unsafe. It is making them, in reality, unsafe. And the fact that county leadership does not work to end this contract lets them know which side that you're on, and lets them know that you're not on their side. Monica Sparks came to our jail rally, and she said that she was with us. Steve Wooden, we haven't heard from you yet. Are you all going to resolve to end this contract? Are you going to put pressure on the sheriff to end this contract with ICE? We need to know, and more importantly, the folks that we're getting calls from every week, who are families who are losing their main income earners, families who suddenly don't know where their rent's going to come from, children who are doing poorly in school because they cannot stop thinking.
You're at two minutes.
About their father who's gone, or their mother who is gone, and wondering what's going to happen to them. People who know from their family members in their countries of origin that if they go back, they will be killed, and yet they find themselves caught in this system, detained for ICE by their very own home county. There are 271 days until this contract is due to be renewed on September 30, 2019. There are 271 days until the contract officially ends. But we are asking you to end it now and to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Smith. I live at 9873 O.R. Road Northeast in Grand Rapids. I'm also a member of the Grand Rapids Rapid Response to ICE and Movimiento Cosecha. I'm here also addressing the issue of ending the contract. I wanted to begin with sort of a testimony from a woman whose husband had been picked up by ICE last year. This is what she said. She says, "It was the morning of May 22 of 2018 at 6:05 a.m. when ICE changed our lives forever. I kissed my husband and said what I say to him every day. I love you and hope you have a good workday. I heard the car start, and I laid back in bed to enjoy some sleep on my day off. Then I heard the sirens. I knew at that moment my husband wasn't coming home from work in the afternoon. My stepson walked into the house and looked at me in the eyes and said the most painful words that a mother should ever have to hear. Took my dad. In a second, everything changed." This was Jennifer, whose husband had been detained for several months. We were able to raise the money to get him out of detention, and we were able to raise recently another $1,000 for legal fees for court appearance he has in a couple of weeks. Over Year's Eve, we raised almost $4,700 for a new community bond fund, so we can help get people out who are being detained by ICE. And we have another woman, a mother, Wuhenia, who we've raised $3,000 of her $5,000 bond to get her out, so that she can be with her daughter again. Now, we know that ending the ICE.
You're at two minutes.
Contract with the county will not stop ICE violence. But it will certainly be one step in the direction to where we need to, to make sure these kinds of families, this kind of suffering, this kind of trauma doesn't happen to families anymore in this community. So I urge you, all of you, particularly the new Commissioners, to think about this, and how important this is for people, for families, for our immigrant brothers and sisters who are struggling and suffering and live in constant fear of this policy and this practice. My colleague Amy said there's only 271 days left till the current contract expires. We'd ask you'd end it before then, because we know the harm is happening every day. Thank you.
My name is JR Martin. I live on an Shenabe land, sometimes referred to as Kent County. And I'm here to join my friends and neighbors in demanding an end to this contract with ICE. So I want to repeat the number that people have given you. There are 271 days until the contract officially expires. And again, you can end it before then. And I also thought that we might benefit contextually from some counting in the other direction, so I want to count some other days. It's been nine days since Christmas Day, when Christians celebrate the birth of a refugee child who was later killed by the state, and when this past year, eight-year-old Felipe Alonso Gomez died in Border Patrol custody. It's been 26 days since seven-year-old Jacqueline Call McKean died in Border Patrol custody. It's been 225 days since 20-year-old Claudia Patricia Gomez Gonzalez was shot in the head and killed by a Border Patrol agent in Texas. And it's been 223 days since May 25, 2018, when Roxana Hernandez, a 33-year-old HIV-positive transgender woman who was fleeing violence in Honduras and seeking a better life, died in ICE custody. Each of these deaths was a murder, whether the weapon was a gun or the denial of care and medical services. It's always been clear that these deaths were murders, but you may have also heard about the findings from an independent autopsy conducted in November, which showed that Roxana Hernandez had been beaten while in ICE custody before her death. The border is a death-haunted and death-dealing structure. ICE is a death and trauma machine, and as of right now, at the start of the new year, that machine is rolling right along, and Kent County is effectively rolling with it. It's been 353 days since the journalist Aisha Siddiqui wrote on Twitter in January 2018, "ICE is the fascist roundup." "ICE is the fascist roundup people imagine as something to anticipate in a worse future. ICE is it. Don't cooperate. Don't let them in if they knock. Don't speak to them if they ask. You can decide what you let happen in your neighborhoods. Protect your neighbors." So that's all there is. You can end the contract. You decide what happens in your neighborhood. Protect your neighbors.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Hemalow. My name is Hemalow. Yo vivo en el lado noroeste de la ciudad. I live in the northwest side of the city. And we've been here since June, asking you to end the contract with ICE. Estamos aquí desde junio, el final de junio, para que termine el contrato con ICE. The violence that JR just said, la violencia que hablo ahora, continúa. It continues in our neighborhoods. Our families have been separated here in the county. Las familias están siendo separadas en la ciudad. Jeff has mentioned some of the examples. Jeff nos dijo algunos de los ejemplos. The reason people is not here, here to say their own testimonies, they either already been separated, las personas que no han venido a decir este testimonio, porque no están aquí, or they're working, because 8:30 in the morning on a Thursday, usually, people is working. They need to attend to their families. La gente está trabajando a las 8:30 de la mañana para poder subsistir en su familia. So we'd like to see if you will wait for 271 days. Si ustedes van a esperar por 271 días para terminar el contrato, o lo pueden ser la semana que entra. You can just do it next week, because the violence continue. Our families have been separated. Our kids suffer. Porque nuestras familias han estado siendo separadas, porque los niños están siendo afectados. And the kids are the most affected.
You're at two minutes.
Los niños son los que están más afectados, as we see in the violence at the border and here in town. Como vemos la violencia allá en la frontera y aquí también. So I urge you to end the contract. So por favor, termina el contrato.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any other public comment today? Welcome to the Board.
Good morning. Michael Scruggs, 921 Fortin, East Grand Rapids, Michigan. Thank you all for receiving me this morning. You all gave me the opportunity 15 years ago to be a Board Member with the Kent County Department of Human Services. I thank you, and I still work in that capacity. We start the new year off with the Kent County Black Caulfield, me representing them today, to ask you to consider, a reasonable consideration, that it's time for us to move from citation instead of incarceration. Our jails is filling up. The crime is down, so we need to lessen that population. Our U.S. government feel that we need to lessen the jail population. Our past governor felt that we need to lessen that population. If we move from citation instead of incarceration, we have free officers up to do other duties. We'll save them money. They spend at least $35 booking fee, $25 a day. That'll save a lot of money. Now, the argument may be, well, we just built a wing on the county jail. We just got all those beds. Well, we wouldn't lose the finance, because those individuals that the state is releasing is coming back to our community. We need to put together an exploratory committee on how we're going to service those individuals, so we can get them. Then we can get our social service agencies to prepare for the influx that's coming into our community. These individuals have a lot of social service needs, medical, mental. Sure, many of them have families that they don't know anymore. We need to help them transition, and we don't need to be Johnny Come lately. We have a lot of social service needs. 10 years ago, we was blessed enough to build a Kent County Department of Human Service complex, and it's doing well. But we want to make sure that we have enough services, enough individuals in place. We want to make sure that money is coming in. We want to be able to measure our success and failure of our social service program, and we want to make sure...
You're at two minutes.
And we want to make sure that each and one of you participate with those individuals in our state legislatures to get that money to come into our community so we can say to this community, "A job well done." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Item 10 for our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Womack for motion.
All right. I would like to make a motion to accept our consent agenda.
Item number 10.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Womack, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Womack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Same thing. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair. I'm new to this. Clerk Lyons, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Yes.
Commissioners Tallon.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Puddin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to move on to Item 11, Resolutions, and I call on Commissioner Vonck for Resolution A.
Thank you, Chair. I'll move Resolution Number One of today's date, appointments to various Commissions and Committees for 2019, Board of Commissioners.
Support by Commissioner Vonck, support by Commissioner Breevy. Any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just want to make one comment. There's been a lot of talk about diversity today, and if you look at our appointments, you know, we could talk about diversity a lot, but actually, walking the block's another different thing. One highlight I want to make is, you know, our road commission seems like forever has been dominated with five white people. And once again, we had another white board member step down to appoint another white board member. That's one of the most invisible boards on this county, and if we're serious about diversity within our boards, I guess we've got to do a little better job.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hennessy?
As I recall, there were more positions to be open on the land bank authority. Can you explain to us the status of that? Yes, so we did have a couple other boards that we need to fill, and we were taking our time to do those, and those will be made at that first legislative meeting this upcoming month. Can you elaborate in terms of what is there besides? I know the land bank authority. What are the positions? Network 180, we had a couple of positions that we needed to fill. There was a faith-based position we needed to find someone for for check, so we're just filling a couple of those yet.
Thank you. Yep. Commissioner Womack.
I support Commissioner Poynstein in his statement about diversity, and as I was a part of some of the teams that decided who would be on and had a chance to interview people for some of these committees and subcommittees, I understand there wasn't as many minorities that applied, so I would just hope that we would take a look into making sure that we're looking at some different ways of advertising those positions as we move into 2019 to get more minority participation for these subcommittees. Would definitely want to support Commissioner Poynstein and thank him for his statements.
Thank you, Commissioner Womack. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to Item Resolution B. I call on Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Item Two of today's date, the Parks 2019 to 2023 Recreation and Natural Areas Master Plan from the Parks Department.
Thank you, Commissioner Breevy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none. This is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are now on to Item 12 on our agenda, appointments by the Chair and annual Chair appointments to various committees. I'll call on Commissioner Stuck.
Thank you, Chair. I would move for approval of the standing committees as identified in the attachment 12A in our package.
And B.
Do I do both at the same time?
They're listed together.
And 12B, which would be the appointment to various committees and boards.
Thank you, Commissioner Stuck. Any questions? Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Voorhees. Any questions or comments on these items? I will say we did a lot of work on these. It is difficult to try to find folks who are, you know, have the time and commitment and, you know, the experience necessary for some of these boards. We do have a focus to be more intentional this year in getting people recruited, and I would ask that all of us kind of focus on that moving forward. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to Item 13, Subcommittees. I'm told I am just to make a quick announcement to reference Section 5 and 5.1 of our standing rules, which explains the roles of the Finance and Physical Resources Committee and the Legislative and Human Resources Committee. You should all have your list in front of you. The schedules are going to be relatively the same as last year. Legislative may have a few less meetings just due to agenda items. So with that, are there any questions? All right, seeing none. On to Item 14, our second public comment, which is one minute. Do we have anyone for public comment? Welcome back.
Michael Scruggs again. I forgot to thank you all for serving this community, and I just wanted to say to Commissioner Harold Mast for the job that he's done working with you all.
Any other public comment today? All right, seeing none, we will move on.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you there. Come on up.
I had the honor of being part of your...
Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Robin Benton. I'm a board member of Noble Neighborhood Association. I'm here to reinforce the fact that you were entertaining in your strategic plan the idea of diversity and equity, and I suggested then, and I'd like to reinforce that, and that is that the Kent County Commissioners, Kent County joined the Governmental Alliance for Racial Equity to allow for a framework to start working towards a diversity, which is optics. We want diversity and inclusion, and so I want to reinforce the fact that there isn't a structure set up to support governmental assistance. Give her Governmental Alliance for Racial Equity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment today? Come on up. Welcome.
Jessica Ann Tyson, 2180 44th Street, Kentwood resident and proud Kent County resident. And I just wanted to let you all know that we started a restaurant about two years ago, and we have an expansion, and we're truly excited about that expansion. So we invite all of you to come out and join us for lunch so that we can have more people employed and also feed Grand Rapids delicious, delightful Southern cuisine. And on the last note, I'd like to say that life is very important. So, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner Tallon. Happy birthday to you.
All right, that might have been the best public comment because the face is the color of her dress. All right, any other public comment today? All right, seeing none. We are going to move on to Item 15, and this is a recognition of one of our departing Commissioners. We didn't get to recognize Commissioner Mast before for all of his work, and I'd call on Commissioner Saulfeld to go up to present Commissioner Mast his recognition. Please. Commissioner Mast, can you come up?
So, maybe this is my final act as the former Chair of the Board, but Harold, it's been a pleasure serving with you for me eight years and for some others on the Board, much longer than that. I think if there was a definition of decency and collaboration and somebody who really cares for the county, it would show a picture of you for that. So, all I'm going to say is just thank you for your years of service, not only to this Board, but to the community at large. I know you've done a lot locally with Kentwood and the areas that you represent. We will definitely miss you.
I'm going to read this proclamation quickly, just because Commissioner Mast has given so much of his time and talent to our county for so long, to our country as a former veteran, and I just think it's important that we honor him properly today. Whereas Commissioner Harold Mast will be leaving this Board of Commissioners at the end of his present term, I think this was for last month. Commissioner Mast previously served on the Board from 2003 through 2008. Commissioner Mast was reelected to office and sworn in January of 2011 as county commissioner representing District 12, and has faithfully served the residents of Kent County for the last eight years. During his tenure as Commissioner, he diligently served on both the Finance and Physical Resources Committee and Legislative and Human Services Committee. Commissioner Mast faithfully served his constituents and dedicated his time and talents by also serving on Community Mental Health Authority Board, Veteran Services Committee, Area Agency on Aging, the Area Community Services Employment and Training Council, Senior Milage Review Committee, and the Lake Shore Regional Partners Substance Abuse Oversight Policy Board. Those are heavy lifts. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby thank Commissioner Mast for his dedicated service, contributions to local government, and his sincerity to the residents of Kent County. Be it further resolved that the County Board of Commissioners reluctantly bid Commissioner Mast farewell and wish him much happiness in his retirement. Be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be given to him as a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you. I just, thank you very much, fellow Commissioners and citizens and constituents, and my new successor. Thank you, Monica. We've known each other for a while, and I'm sure you're going to do well. I have to apologize, and I think I did to a couple of you. I left early on the December 20 meeting, and that was not under any duress or disappointment at some of the happenings that occurred, but I just had another commitment at 12 o'clock, and it was getting beyond 12 o'clock, and so the Chair graciously let me leave and said I could come back. So, thank you very much for addressing you. I want to thank some people. I was able to offer thanks to the most important person in my life, my wife, during the County Commission Annual Christmas Dinner on December 12, because I knew she wouldn't come here. I don't think she really likes coming to these types of meetings. She supports me. She's a very, very active supporter. She did some walking for me, but I think she likes to stay out of the limelight. So I kind of surprised her at the Christmas dinner when I offered my congratulations and thanks to her. Now, I want to thank my fellow County Commissioners and constituents. I appreciate you letting me come to this meeting. First and foremost, I want to thank the citizens of Kentwood and recently the city of Wyoming, because I represent portions of both of those cities, for electing me as their county, as their city and county representative for the past 34 years. You mentioned that I've served 20 years on the County Commission, but I served 14 years as a Kentwood City Commissioner before that. I've been honored to serve all of you constituents and our county and city, but I owe at least three specific people thanks for getting me started on this path of community service. And you can see by my white hair, some of these people are pretty old. One of the first is now deceased Kentwood Mayor Peter Lambert, who, when I moved here in 1972, after my three years of active duty in the Navy, approached me about serving on the Kentwood Planning Commission in 1974. That was my first start in public service. I really enjoyed those eight years, and I owe him appreciation for letting me be part of that, for better or for worse, for eight years. Those are a lot of the formative years of the city of Kentwood. Second, I want to thank Kentwood Mayor Jerry DeRider, who encouraged me in 1982 to seek this open seat on the Kentwood City Commission. And if I had not been for his encouragement and help, I don't think it would have been possible. That started my venture of serving with all the mayors of Kentwood, from Lambert to Hofflinger to Rider, Hardeman, Root, Clinton, and most recently Stephen Keppley. I consider all of those my friends, my colleagues, and I've served a lot with them. As was mentioned, there was a gap in my service on the County Commission. That was the only election that I lost for, and I've run with 14 different election cycles. Third, I want to thank, and that's kind of a surprise to some of you, former County Commissioner Dick Vandermolen, for getting me started with the County Commission service. He decided to run for the State House in 1996, and he called me and encouraged me to run for his open seat, which at that time represented all of Kentwood. I was successful in that election, and unfortunately, he wasn't for his House seat. And during my 20 years as a County Commissioner, I've had my district changed substantially through three redistricting changes, and one of those allowed him to come back on the Commission, because whereas I was representing the whole city, it was split in 2010, so he was able to come back. I've been pleased to be a part of many decisions that benefited the citizens of Kentwood in my Kentwood Wyoming County Commission. That's impacted me most was the growing diversity within my County Commission district. I represent a commission that runs from roughly 28th Street to 60th Street on both sides of Division Avenue. That has grown, the diversity there has grown considerably, and I've tried to keep on top of that. I've tried to represent the citizens appropriately. But I think the most satisfying times during my 34 years were the periods of time in the city of Kentwood and the county of Kent, in which we, as government officials, were able to convince the citizens to give us some extra money to care for some people. And I reflect on the Senior Milage in 1998, which I was very intimately involved in, the Best Milage in 2014, and the Public Transit Enhancement Milage, which really served a lot of my constituents, because it really enhanced the transportation corridor down Division Avenue. So I've enjoyed all my ups and downs of elected service, and will miss it very much, but enough is enough. It's nice for me to witness today swearing in of my replacement, Monica Sparks. Thank you very much for stepping forward, and you will represent our district well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mast. You will be missed. All right, we are moving on to Item 16, which is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I sit on the Convention and Arena Authority Liaison Committee along with Commissioner Breevy and Commissioner Coleman, and we had a meeting recently where an important motion was made that I thought was worth sharing back to the entire Board, and that was to authorize the SMG staff to engage the services of an architect to conduct an in-depth analysis of a hotel construction at the DeVos Place site, and the services of an investment analysis to assess funding options available to the authority as regards to financing a hotel, and work with the CAA board members to initiate dialogue with officials at the city of Grand Rapids and county of Kent regarding their potential participation in financing a hotel. And where this comes from is, I will also put on my hat that I wear as an experienced Grand Rapids Board Member and a West Michigan Sports Commission Board Member. When we have conventions that are solicited, and they are solicited, you have groups of people that work very, very hard at getting groups to come here to Grand Rapids. It does not just happen because we are Grand Rapids, we are Kent County. It is a team effort of people who are paid to do this, and it helps to have the proper accommodations for the size groups we're looking for, and that's why... the proper accommodations for the size groups we're looking for and that's why the additional investigation in this area. I'm sure we're going to be talking more about this in the upcoming years, upcoming year. I don't have anything else to add. They didn't share anything more, but this is what I have for now and just wanted to put it on everyone's radar as we approach 2019.
Thank you Commissioner Jones. We might want to get the CAA to come in and make a presentation in the near future. Any other Commissioner Reports? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you Chair. As many of you know, I sit on the Board of the Lake Shore Regional Entity, which is the Administrator of Behavioral Health Services in this region. And as of January 1, we have entered a new era after a long, arduous and difficult effort over the last year or so. We have finally implemented and are now in the process of facilitating a new private-public partnership for the administration of those services at the region and look forward to stabilizing those services as we, as we go forward. The second positive is to publicly thank our legislators. This past session, they did accept our request as a county for some supplemental funding to assist the Lake Shore Regional Entity as it transitions and we had made a request, excuse me, we made the request, the legislators fought for that, ultimately were successful in getting that supplemental funding passed and then the Governor signed it, so we're on to facilitating that new era. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Steck. Any other reports? All right. I just have one. I will be implementing the Rules Subcommittee pursuant to our rules. We have to review those and potentially revise those every odd year, so our Rules Subcommittee will consist of Commissioners Soffeld, Brebe and Hennessy and they will be concluded by April. So we will operate under the current rules until we potentially will be changing those or revising them when the Rules Subcommittee submits those prior to our April meeting. Onto miscellaneous, any miscellaneous today? Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to add my public thanks to, where do you go to? Hi, Commissioner Mast. The, yeah, in spite of my youthful appearance, I have worked with Commissioner Mast for 24 years on various issues in our community and it was because he focused on his service as a County Commissioner, his, his passion for housing and equity in housing has to be noted. I met him when he worked for Pine Rest and their Developmental Disability Housing Division or part of them and his passion there and then he started Genesis Nonprofit and continues to work again tirelessly. I hope he'll continue to provide his wisdom as we move forward on housing. So again, I add my thanks to Commissioner Mast for his service to our community and will have continuing positive impact going forward because when you build houses, they last a while and he's built many a house. That being said, I urged the Chair to, somewhere on the list was a committee to look at affordable housing and the county's role in that, how we need to be appointing that Subcommittee as soon as possible. And once again, since everything fell off the plate on December 31st, to start the new session of us by stating that we need to bring together the Subcommittee on the relationship between the Sheriff Department and recent immigrants. We need to do that with haste and making sure that we, we really are a welcoming community as we claim on our billboards, do we have that action all throughout our community? So those two things I'd like to see happen as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Bukowski. Any other miscellaneous today? Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'd really like to just thank Harold Mast once again for his service to this county. I served on the asset board with Commissioner Mast and one thing I can say, he's a fine example of nonpartisan leadership, working across the aisle to help get things done and supported, was very supportive of me as a new Commissioner. Also would like to thank everybody who came out for a public comment on both public comment sessions, because that's definitely an important part of our governmental services. Welcome our new Commissioners, Commissioner Wooden and also Mrs. Sparks. I look forward to working with them here at the Commissioner, Board of Commissioners and just want to agree with Commissioner Bukowski that it's very important that we do look into affordable housing and how we can be a part of that and I look forward to being a part of the ICE Task Force Committee if that comes to fruition, so we can look at that subject and want to thank our Administrator Wayman Brick as he puts another year under his belt for all the service that him and the staff have given us at the county.
Thank you Commissioner Womack. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you Chair. Just joining my colleagues and thanking Commissioner, former Commissioner Harold Mast for all of his years of service. As I listened to his parting comments, I had a vision of John Wayne on the horse riding into the sunset, but I also had breakfast with Harold this morning, so I know that that's the wrong vision. He has continued to commit to serve this county, maybe in more ways than you did before, so I assure that we will continue to see you and have the blessings of your, of your commitment and work for this county. So thank you Harold.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate our leadership team, you, Chair Bolter, Vice Chair Steck and also Minority Vice Chair Talon, who I believe was actually the first Commissioner I even met when I was in high school, which believe it or not was a few years ago, and because he is my family's Commissioner. I want to thank my, my family and my, and close friends for coming today to see the, us take the oath and start this new term, especially my wife, my parents and my mother-in-law. And I'd also like to thank and echo the thanks of the other Commissioners and thanking Harold Mast for his service, but also thanking my predecessor for his years of service. Clearly he and I competed in the political arena and had disagreements on policy, but I never once doubted his integrity, his patriotism and his passion for service and as I pause in this chair, I hope to emulate that because in the end we're all just pausing in chairs. The only permanency is, is the mandate we receive from the people. So thank you very much for serving and I'm excited to start this term with you.
Thank you Commissioner. I might mess up your name sometimes because I kept calling you Wooden and Commissioner Skiggs is like, it's Wooden.
In West Michigan, you are not the first and you are not going to be the last.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you very much. I want to first say thank you Commissioner Mast. You have been a wonderful resource, a wonderful friend and a wonderful Commissioner, so I really appreciate you and you've been a great mentor. So thank you very much for your years of service. I have huge shoes to fill, even though I wear a nine. I think I've got like a 15 to fill now, so thank you for your example. I'd like to thank my family for being here today and many friends for joining us. Commissioner Betsy Arts, thank you for coming and also my mother-in-law from California, Ms. Paula Howard, so thank you for joining us, but everyone, thank you for your comments. I hope that we do practice what we preach here and we are looking for making sure that we take care of the immigration issue. So I said, I've made my comment to you before and I still stick by that. So I hope that we will be able to work together as a Board. I hope that we will be able to work together for affordable housing and all of the residents here in Kent County. I do have an agenda. People say, what's your, what's your deal? What's your agenda? And my agenda is very simple. It's to listen, learn and serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioner Sparks. Any other miscellaneous today?
All right, I just have a few items. I of course want to welcome our new Commissioners to the Board. Thank you for being here and, and your service. I want to kind of emphasize that we really want to focus on increasing communication in all aspects of the county, in between each other, between parties, between staff and especially with our districts. So I think we should always feel free to, to, to address each other, talk to the staff, communicate in any way you feel you need to, to get your questions answered, concerns addressed and just moving forward, I think that's going to be really key. If there are ways we can improve, we all want to hear about it. Leadership wants to make sure that we're all addressing those concerns and, and, and we just want to be very communicative moving forward. I also want to thank all of our visitors for being here today. This is a big day for many of us and we want to welcome all, all of our family and friends and I want to welcome all of those who created and gave us public comment today. We appreciate adhering to the rules of our Board. I think it's more productive and provides mutual respect for both, both sides. So thank you to all those who provided public comment today. Moving forward, we are going to work on various things. The staff will be very busy out the gate. We've got our strategic plan, which we should be receiving here in the next couple of months. We do want to look at land use for the entire county and how we are properly using that, how we can better communicate with our townships and our cities to maybe coordinate a little bit better. We will be receiving a space needs study again to analyze all of our buildings and our properties, so that will be on the agenda. We do have land bank transition. I know that our staff has been reaching out and working hard with those at the land bank, so we will continue to focus on that. And our immigration focus group will be moving forward as soon as possible, Commissioner Bukowski. So I want to hear feedback if needed and, and we will be moving forward with all of that. So with that, we are, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Call on Commissioner Womack.
Our motion that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair and to Thursday, January 24, 2019 at 8:30 a.m. for an official Board meeting.
I have a second. Second by Commissioner Skiggs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh yeah.